Over there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I did.
Here. Ch- chatters. Here we go. Um, so welcome.
I'm gonna lower it. I'm listening.
Someone is gonna be muted online. Um. So we, if there's an emergency, for those of you in the room, you go out the back of the room, either door and either way down the hallway. There's exits on both ends of the main hallway. Um, any changes to the agenda?
Kelsey?
Kelsey has changed the agenda?
Other business.
Oh, we do have one item under other business. Um, I was given a draft letter, a letter of support from our um, community development director, Alana Blanchard, about the east-west um, crossing and an additional grant application to the Department of Transport, US Department of Transportation. Um, so I will raise that under other business.
For the bike pad bridge.
For the bike pad, yeah, I said the east-west, east-west crossing, which is the fancy name for the bike pad bridge over I eighty-nine.
Oh, yeah. So that's a hot button, east-west.
The east.
I think we need to just call it the pedestrian bridge over eighty-nine, maybe. Um, okay, that seems fine. Um, open to the public for items not related to the agenda. And there is a lot on the agenda, including the comprehensive plan. So this would be if there's anything not related to those items. And if you're joining us online, we are not monitoring the chat, but you can unmute um, or turn your video on and wave if you have anything. Okay, I'm not seeing anything, so we can move on to announcements. Um, any announcements up here? Staff report.
A couple of quick things to announce. One, um, at your last meeting, we noted that we'd be uh, that we were going to be going to the Vermont Downtown Board about the expansion of the neighborhood development area to the north side of Williston Road. Uh, that took place yesterday. Um, and the expansion, which includes the Form-Based Code District, north of Williston Road was approved unanimously. So it is um, in effect immediately. So very exciting. Um, supports more affordable housing there. Um, uh, provides more benefits to us as we apply for grants and to the private sector. Simplifies um, or reduces the cost with that two fifty and state permitting. So very positive. Um, second thing to let you all know about is that um, work towards the completion of the conservation easement at Wheeler is continuing. Um, there's gonna be an announcement in this next, I believe, next issue of the City News Digital Newsletter. Um, letting folks know that there's gonna be a um, boundary survey taking place that we're gonna have, that are gonna have physical markers. So that's one of the requirements of the Montland Trust. So just letting you know that work is continuing, and this is a big next step. That's what I got.
All right. Um, well, um, and was the hearing warned for seven PM?
Yes.
We can get started. Okay, so we can move on to item number five, which is our public hearing on the city plan twenty twenty-four. Um, I believe we need a motion to open the public hearing.
Could we identify Jeanie's iPad?
Jean's iPad?
If someone wants to speak, then we'll ask for their full name.
Okay, I move to open the public hearing. Is?
Second.
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. Great. So I think before we start getting comment, um, do we have anything from the staff level that you wanna say?
Um, I guess all I would have to say is some scheduling options. Um, there is the possibility of the Planning Commission deciding to move this, the city plan forward to City Council tonight. If that occurs, then it can be received by City Council on October second, their meeting um, next week. If we, if the co- can, commission decides not to do that and to have further discussion either tonight at a special meeting or at their next, at your next um, regular meeting, then it would be received by City Council on October sixteenth. So it's just two different options of when they can start their review process um, of the city plan.
And then just um, in terms of uh, staff notes, uh, you saw in your packet that um, our new communications uh, Director Andy Brumbaugh did a um, copy edit reading of it. He made um, a handful of um, little minor um, components that Kelsey incorporated. And then I think there were a couple that um, he flagged for your discussion. Is that right, Kelsey?
No, not from his edits.
No, okay. All right. So just some very minor typographical things that've um, repeated words and things like that.
The only things I had sort of a longer comment attached in his um, word document review were um, clarifying questions that I just, you know, tweaked a verb tense or something to clarify the meaning of a sentence. It was no sort of additional substance that needed to be discussed.
Okay. Um, and then I guess just the other piece of it is the process. So tonight we're having our public hearing, then we can make changes. When we're ready, we can vote, um, which would send it to City Council. And then the City Council gets it and then needs to warn a hearing, and this is maybe where you should pick up.
Yeah, sure. So um, a couple of things. First, the um, Planning Commission does not need to warn in additional public hearing if you decide to make any changes. So there may be some, some changes that the commission decides to make to the draft plan after hearing feedback from the public. Um, a further public hearing at the commission level is not required to then vote to move it forward with those edits. Um, but at the City Council level, um, it would be. So there are a few options that the council can take. They can decide to discuss, review the plan themselves and discuss amongst themselves first and then hold their first public hearing. Um, or they can hold a public hearing and then discuss and then hold a second public hearing. But if at any point they make additional changes after the first public hearing, they will end up effectively needing to have three. So that's the point of um, having the deadline be, the deadline for the Planning Commission to get it to City Council is October sixteenth, and that's a fairly firm, like almost rock solid deadline um, in order to give them enough time because they have um, fairly extensive, you know, warning requirements, you know, thirty days, fifteen days, and it all kind of adds up and we get close to the deadline. So um, the council, as far as I'm aware, has not made any decisions about their order of if they're going to do some discussing before hearings. Um, or if they're gonna start with a hearing and then make changes and then have more hearings. Um, but that, just to make the point that after the commission level, the public and then anybody else has at least two additional hearings and some more um, time to write any written comments on the city plan before it's adopted by City Council.
Definitely one more public hearing. Like if the.
There has to be two.
Oh, there has to be two.
They're def- they're.
I just wanna make sure. If they just decided to go as it is, they still need to.
There would have to be two. Um, there's a possibility if they make a change between the first and the second, that then they would need through, or after the second even, then they would need three.
Yeah.
Um. Yep. Because the intention being that's the last vote on anything. So then um, the public, the City Council will vote on the very final version and the ci- the last hearing will be on the very final version with no further changes by City Council.
Got it. Okay. Any questions on the process or the timing before we get into comments? Okay, so um, we will open up for public comment. Um, we have received a few um, written um, by email, which have been distributed. So the, the commission has seen those and had a chance to review those that we have received. Um, and the way we're gonna do the hearing is that um, if you have comments, you can um, raise your hand or, and then come up if you're in the room to the podium where there's the microphone. And um, us as the commissioner are gonna listen and um, after all the comments are done, then we'll have discussion amongst our, amongst ourselves. So it's not a big dialogue necessarily. So. Um, so if whoever wants to go first.
And you're, the microphones at the, this front table here and at the podium are all available. So if you're more comfortable sitting or standing, you can use any of them. Just make sure that you press the push button when you get up there and that the little green light turns on.
Okay, so yeah, come on up and then um, you had your hand second. So.
Oh, and when you, when you get up to the microphone, if you could state your full name and spell your last.
There we go. Good evening. I'm John Bosange and B-O-S-S-A-N-G-E. I'm on the um, South Burlington Land Trust on the Board of Directors there. Um, I'm on the Natural Resources and Conservation Committee, which I enjoy very, very much, and I represent our city in the Champlain Valley Conservation Partnership. Um, I wanted to just mention two things quickly. One, that um, for the comprehensive plan, that everything we do, everything you write, everything in that plan needs to be measured against the climate crisis. And I don't know how that's done with your language, but everything that you eventually approve, I think all of us individually in this group just need to ask, what's the impact on the climate? And I would ask that you keep that question alive all through your deliberations in the language that you send forward. The other thing I wanted to bring up was um, what concerns me, having gone through this in other cities and towns, is just a word I would use is carrying capacity. How much can we do? And I knew this because I'm a retired middle school principal. I've watched developments result in multiple trailers and rings on schools. I've watched developments on you need to have different branches of library. As a population grows, a little post office, a second post office, a second fire station, substation, if you will. Um, TPW requests that publicly from their trucks, snow piles, and of course personnel runs on all of this. I mean, the maintenance of our infrastructure, more sewer and run treatment plants. Um, the police, my cruisers, you know, the whole thing, the intersections that need a turning, it's much wider than you know. It goes on and on and these are costs, and these are costs that are not covered by impact fees. I've never seen it. And these are costs that I've never seen covered by growing groundless. That doesn't cover it either. My experience is that over time, it's a taxpayer, you and me, who end up paying increased taxes to cover all these municipal services that need to be expanded. So the question I have is, as you approve housing, Lord knows we need housing. It was wonderful news, Paul, that we need apartments, we need a lot of it in the core of our city. Just how much carrying capacity do we have? To pay. Cause the impacts of that, of growth um, will be more than, as I mentioned. So it's a bit some personnel costs. Um, and we've seen this script all throughout America for dozens and dozens and dozens of years. And I want more housing. I want it in the core. I'm really thrilled to see what's going on in Martha Street. Um, and I enjoy that, to watch that, and I'm proud of that, and I thank you and the City Council for pushing for that. But in the back of our minds, the second question is how much can we carry? And someone told me one time, South Burlington needs to be the housing hub for Chittenden County. I just threw my head back and said, that can't happen. We can't carry all of that. So that's my comment for you today to think about those questions as you deliberate. And I thank you very much for the time to talk with you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Sean.
Thank you. Uh, my name's Adam Glazer, G-L-A-S-E-R. Um, and I actually have a question um, on map one, where there are um, parks laid out, new parks. There's one listed in the southwest quadrant along the lake. And looking at the map, um, it's kinda hard to see where it ends, but um, it looks like it potentially is maybe fifteen hundred feet along the lakefront of a park. And the last fifty feet of that would be my neighbor's beach and my beach. And I just can't tell if that's intentional on there or just the way it looks when I really blow up the map. And is your intention to take my beach? And that's what it looks like on, on map one. I mean, honestly, that's, I'm. So i- is it not the intent to take beachfront away from people who have it?
It's, it's a kind of fuzzy map.
Okay, it, it goes right up to the, I, it looks like the map draws a line right up to the stream.
I, I think that's a proposed park.
It is.
Yeah.
It is, but I just do not have the proposal, you know?
Yeah, no, I, I apologize. I didn't, didn't mean by light of it.
No, 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 no.
We absolutely do not mean to steal your beach.
Well, that's, that's kind of what I was hoping you would say. Um, but maybe you could revise that map so it doesn't look like it goes all the way up to that stream and maybe the proposed park, just in case five years from now, ten years, whenever it actually, something gets done, it, you know? It's, it's remembered that that's not the idea was to take over people's, people's land. So that was it. Yeah, right there. That stream, um, yeah, my land is thirty feet north of that stream. My neighbor is the twenty feet north of that. And then so.
Um, am I going to, you said this is the fuzzy map. This one's not the fuzzy map. This is a, a different one. Just to, can you see what he's got up on the screen here?
Yeah, so where that stream is, along that stream is on my property.
This is the community facilities, um, plan community facilities map.
Okay, well.
Just say that.
We've heard you.
I'm just gonna say that park is nothing more than aspirational.
I, I totally get that, and I'm all for, you know, having more people have better access to the lake. I would just assume that the aspiration does not show, that someone down the road doesn't say eminent domain, here we come, we're taking away everything. So thank you. That's a.
Very good. Thank you, Adam. Um, anyone else who wanna come up?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I hope you don't mind. I took the time to write out my comments because I wanted to make sure that I didn't miss anything. And um, so good evening. I'm Kathy Easton. My husband and I live on Holmes Road in South Burlington. Adam happens to be in my neighborhood, and I suspect he's probably nicer than I am. Hmm. I appreciate this opportunity to offer comments to planning and zoning regarding the city plan twenty twenty-four. Let me note at the outset that I appreciate the hours of time, thought, and planning that went into arriving at this stage in the creation of a vision for the future of the city of South Burlington. I thank all those among staffers, board members, and commissioners, along with interested citizens, who have given so generously of their time and service to our community, to South Burlington and to its residents. Allow me first to note this, that the city plan is an impressive document of what looks like a hundred and twenty-four pages, including a variety of maps. That makes it roughly one-third the length of the recently revised land development regulations and maps. I believe the LDRs add up to three hundred and ninety-five pages, and that's important if you're a citizen and you're busy and you're trying to understand things. Although I have tried to my best to give each document the attention it deserves, and in fact, we have had reason to do just that in the past year. I would hazard a guess that not many of South Burlington residents have read more than about ten pages of either document. I may be underestimating, and I'm not making this observation to disparage fellow citizen. I'd just like to point out that in the busy lives people lead, many lack the time and inclination to closely follow municipal matters. And in that process, sometimes critical directions for the future and changes can pass by unnoticed. Although I did not attend any of the public comment meetings prior to this evening, I did watch many of them online so that I could listen to the input of the fifty or so folks who attended. I met the August two deadline to submit written comments to the city. We confirmed afterward that my submission was archived with the fifty or so, excuse me, communications that were provided to the city. That said, and since it's possible that not many people had the chance to review my comments, I'll take a minute to share them now. I will not in any way attempt to address the entirety of the city plan twenty twenty-four document and trust that other residents will step up to speak to their own concerns in their own quadrants. Instead, I'll restrict my comments to three observations regarding the region of South Burlington in which I left, the southwest quadrant, which runs roughly along Shelton Road to the shoreline of Lake Champlain. First, let me state upfront that I have found the maps difficult to navigate and fully understand. It's possible that the problem may be my own technical incompetence. But I do think that each map should be clearly labeled as draft so that viewers do not believe that what is depicted on the map is in fact going to happen. That said, and regarding the southwest quadrant, some maps seem to indicate several proposed roadways that appear to connect certain areas that are now separated, which may include the area around Fayette Road and Fire Station Number Two. And while there may be some merit in the notion of connectivity and parallel routes of transit along Shelton Road, I don't know if the proponents of the connectors have traversed the affected area or are familiar with the neighborhoods, businesses, and traffic patterns of those neighborhoods. A boots-on-the-ground presence would, I believe, raise some important questions regarding the impact of such corridors on lifestyle commerce, the transportation network, public safety, private property rights, not to mention the costs of such a project. Second, at one point in the draft for the southwest quadrant, a statement was made as follows. This is a quote. "A large minimally developed property, dot, 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 bordering Lake Champlain, dot, 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 with adoption of conservation PUDs and the habitat blocks, an expansion of wetland and river corridor protection. Several natural resources on the property have now been protected. A public park appears on the current official map in this area and should be considered to complement Red Rocks Park," end of quote. I've recently come to understand that the establishment of habitat blocks does not necessarily preclude development of an area. An observation that I believe was also made by the Natural Resources and Conservation Committee in providing their input to city plan twenty twenty-four, and I believe they wrote regarding habitat blocks, quote, "This is not guaranteed to be permanent protection as the LDRs could be changed," end of quote. So especially considering the city plan twenty twenty-four and the city of South Burlington's emphasis on environment and climate concerns, it would seem to me that plans depicting a future that is uncertain should be cautious and circumspect in alluding to protected status going forward and/or to describing future land use in a given area. As the city has seen in the past, many times, areas that had been treed, woodlands, and natural sanctuaries have a way of becoming densely developed. As Johnny Mitchell sang in that song, Big Yellow Taxi, "You take paradise, put up a parking lot." Third, this concern is important to ourselves and also to other neighbors who own private property in the southwest quadrant in an area abutting the Lake Champlain shoreline. If you look closely at the maps and work your way through the layers, there are illustrations suggesting that pieces of property that are currently in private ownership are being eyed for future use by the city. Examples include designating a current single-lane dead-end gravel privately maintained road as a quote planned lane for public use, or indicating a lakefront city park area that crosses over our private property or a shared use path for bicycle and pedestrian use that cuts across multiple existing privately held properties. I have to state that to the best of my knowledge, the owners of these properties have not been approached by the city regarding land acquisition by purchase, nor by any other means jurisdictions utilized to acquire, acquire private parcels of land. And in the case of our own property, it's proposed that a shared use path cuts right across our lawn, traverses our rear patio, and then connects with Holmes Road, which is a private neighborhood road. The people who own and live on these properties have faithfully paid taxes to the city and have been affiliated with our neighborhood for extended periods of time, in some case decades. You can imagine the shock and anger that they felt in seeing their own properties being so appropriated. Now, I was told by staffers that this is just a vision, not a set and settled matter, that these changes just represent what could be in the future. That may be the case, but to many people, what is written or drawn becomes fact in the minds of the beholders. And for right or for wrong, city maps are often viewed as official, like official currency or official passports. So the city plan twenty twenty-four's appearance of having plans to appropriate residents' private property was for many of us deeply unsettling and disturbing. So those are my three areas of comment. Again, I do appreciate your efforts, and I thank you for this opportunity to address concerns regarding city plan twenty twenty-four. And if I has, have misperceived the city plan in some way, I would welcome your comments or corrections. And that is all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. Um, who wants to go next?
Hey, my name is Greg Ticom, T-I-T-C-O-M-B. I'm a neighbor. Lean in a little closer. Greg Ticom, T-I-T-C-O-M-B. I'm a neighbor of Adam and Kathy who just spoke for me. And I would just like to tack on to what they've said about this area of proposed park and bike lane. Um, there's an upcoming design review board on October third for development in our area, but we know that's a long way out. And we'd just like to point out that the, the proposed bike path that Kathy was just talking about that goes across their yard, basically goes across their yard and then in between our two houses. I've never done it, but I could easily underhand toss a baseball and hit their house. Um, so the idea of having a public pathway and everything that would entail is a bit troublesome to think about. And just the fact that currently, assuming no more um, future development, which would be many years out, that that is a single-lane dirt road privately maintained. So the idea of people using that as a throughway is not anything that we're excited about. Um, as well as, given the close proximity of our house to our neighbor, um, any noise, littering, et cetera, that would happen. any noise, littering, et cetera, that would happen along a public bike path, um, is definitely something that we're worried about. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Sarah, did you have your hand up also?
No, I'm Sarah Dopp. Make sure the light is on, the green light. It is.
Oh, I see. The shades of green. Okay, thanks. Uh, Sarah Dopp, the last name is D-O-P-P. Um, thank you to John for articulating two of my big points. Um, I've spoken before at this podium earlier in the process to just lend my support for the overarching theme of this document, which is that everything going forward needs to be examined through a lens that recognizes climate change and the realities that we're all facing. It can sound alarmist when this sort of thing is written, but frankly, the situation is alarming. And so I think we have to strike the very highest aspirations that we can in this area and put those down as the values of this community. Doesn't mean that no more development can ever happen, but this needs to be a paramount part of the discussion for everything that happens, no matter what the topic is going forward. The other thing, I, well, there's, there's a number of things. What was the other point you made, John? My mind has just gone blank. Carrying capacity. Big, big, big topic. Um, absolutely. And what I found missing, and maybe I missed it because there's a lot of words to read, as has been pointed out. Um, I'm not really seeing a plan for how this reality of carrying capacity will be addressed or met. Different municipalities have, have dealt with this in different ways. At least in the past, I know that Williston had sort of a cap on the amount of building that could be done each year to spread the development out over time and, and just incrementally add to the load on our various municipal and educational services. And that's one method. There are other methods caps could be put on. What the document seems to state is the reality that we have found over twenty years in terms of population growth and that we should anticipate between one and two percent of population growth or housing growth, or however you want to express it. But that's simply a statement of fact or what we've observed. It doesn't necessarily mean that that's what we want or need or can uh, take on as a community. So I think, you know, there has to be a way of measuring that. And also the document alludes to the fact that it was a good deal higher, I think, on, on the last Senate census or last year. I'm not sure, uh, which from this, uh, distance. But the point was made that there was a recent year where the growth was higher than that. So I don't know how we know that next year and the year after and five years out will not continue that trend of increased growth, which I don't think we can, we can support. So I, I just want to see more detail in the document about how this is going to be measured, how it's going to be limited, uh, controlled, whatever word you want to use. Couple of other things, not necessarily in order of importance, but, um, on page eight, um, under the land and property interest acquisition section, um, I didn't see there, there was a little laundry list of, of items that we could acquire property for, purposes that we could acquire property for. I didn't see conservation listed there. That seems to me a pretty basic, unless I again missed something.
Sarah, can you repeat where that was?
Um, I think it's page eight.
Follow through.
Page eight of the document. And, um, under the economy section, goal twenty, um, expresses, I can't tell you, and I don't have my computer.
Could you go back to what was on page eight?
So, so that's, there's a section she says called land slash property interest acquisition.
Or words to that effect.
Yeah. And so there's a list of goals. It currently says parks, schools, sewer and water facilities, roads and recreation paths. She's suggesting adding conservation to that list.
Since we're routinely using public monies for this purpose. And that's been a theme that the public has very much supported in recent years.
And then you were saying the economy.
Yeah, under economy. Sorry, I didn't write page numbers down after that first one. That was my bad. Um, but it's goal twenty, uh, refers to electrifying, uh, eight percent increase of electrifying commercial properties. Even though solar is mentioned elsewhere, and it's mentioned in goal twenty-nine of the energy section, but there in the energy section, it doesn't specify commercial properties. I, I would myself like to see electrification and, and increase in solar installations related to commercial properties be part of goal twenty in the economy section. In the environmental section, I, I guess these, these percentages are just coincidental. But in one part of the description, it talks about fifty-one percent is currently uh, of South Burlington is currently open land with some regulation limiting its development. And then a little later on, it speaks about an aspiration to protect fifty-one percent. This is in goal thirty-five, uh, of open land going forward. And I, you know, fifty-one percent just is a different kind of number, and so it leapt off the page for me. Uh, I don't think these two things are actually related, or if they are, is it the same fifty-one percent? I don't know. Um, that just confused me a little bit. I also didn't see any goals in the, um, history and commercial and cultural section. There are a couple of actions written there, but it strikes me that if you've got actions, they must be in support of some goals in the way this whole document has been laid out. And I, I would think there'd be at least one goal in that area that could be articulated.
Sarah, which section are you talking about that doesn't have goals?
It's, it's the umbrella of, um, community, cultural, and
Community, history, and culture has four goals on page fifty-three.
It does. Okay, I will check that again. My bad then.
What's up, Jeff? Beth Sigmund, can you mute yourself?
Do you know where it is?
Please. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Paul.
Okay, so I'll, I'll look again for those. I just thought there ought to be some. Public transportation, not greater Burlington public transportation, but smaller, community-based South Burlington public transportation is something that I've been interested in a long, in for a long time, that we ought to be planning toward some kind of, you know, mini-bus kind of service that would buzz around a route or change routes every quarter of the hour or, I don't, you know, I'm not here to lay it out, but something that would permit somebody who lives in a far-flung corner of the city to use public transportation without walking three miles to get to it so that they could just go to city center and back home again. That whole realm, I'm not sure I've heard discussion within the city of that. And I, I think that's got some possibilities that could help with the climate change goals as well. And then the last thing I'll say, it's not the last thing, but some of this is kind of nitpicking, I realize. But another thing that I don't think I've heard much discussion of, we talk about conserving historic properties or buildings. We talk about conserving natural resources and we, we at least pay lip service to those things. But it seems to me over time that we don't, we don't particularly uh, want to conserve geological resources that are part of the community that was bequeathed to us over generations. And by that I mean, when some rocky ledge or steep slopes, which we talk about a lot, uh, is in an inconvenient place, what we do with that is to blast it away. And that seems to me just as destructive of the resources that were bequeathed to us as anything else. We've got a example of this coming to pass, perhaps up on, or coming to pass up at the corner of Park Road and Dorset Street. Uh, I have observed in the last week or two, as I go north on Heinsberg Road uh, from Cheese Factory, that the whole top of that hill where at one time we were going to build a water tower is being, I guess blasted. I haven't heard it. But, um, there are trucks up there and there's an exposed rocky face that was never exposed before. I don't know what's going on there. I'd like to know. Uh, I think I know, but I'd like to know. Um, and that seems to me that that's part of our heritage, that we shouldn't just, there ought to be some rules around that or some permissions, special permissions um, given to be able to alter the physical terrain of the land itself. And we do plenty of that in the pollution area, but here it's just destroying the resource per se. So just some thoughts. Thanks.
Thanks, Sarah. Um, anyone online? No, we haven't heard from anyone online yet. I saw Ray. Ray, you wanna, and then we'll, we'll get back to the room. Go ahead, Ray.
Uh, my name is Ray Gonda. I'm from South Burlington, uh, on South Spear Street. And, uh, uh, I am not on any city committees now, but at one time I chair, I always belonged to the Natural Resources and Conservation Committee for two years and chaired it for two months. And during that time, well, let me back up a little bit. If you follow Front Porch Forum or some of the other local Facebook forums, you'll very frequently see, uh, comments and sometimes pictures of the wildlife here in South Burlington. And, uh, I'm, I'm not only a wildlife appreciator myself, but it appears that there really is a great interest in being able to see wildlife here, wildlife that is normally considered unusual, like foxes, coyotes, bobcats, fishers, and other, other animals like that. E-Even rural people sometimes have trouble seeing those kind of animals on any regular basis. But here in South Burlington, it seems to happen quite a bit frequently, and there's quite a following for these animals. So what I think, based on that, what I think would be a good idea for the city to do would be to assure that those creatures can continue to, uh, use or occupy, depending on the species, uh, South Burlington, uh, to maintain that interest among people. There are several ways that that could be accomplished. One of them we actually implemented when I was the chair of the committee. Uh, we did that through the review of two separate developments, the Long Property and Eastview. And I, I can't say that what has actually happened there was a result of what we did, but something did happen there that helped with regard to protecting wildlife corridors. So there are some wildlife corridor protections in the, uh, in the LDRs, I believe, that came out of the Arrowood Study. However, those particular corridors were, the, the reasoning behind those, I believe, uh, Louise, uh, you, you, Jessica, you might correct me if I'm wrong. The reasoning behind those was climate change, to give animals pathways to move north as the climate warmed. Because we saw no east or west corridors protected in any way. So the question is, in order to continue to allow these wild animals to move freely about the city, and normally it's during the night, there should be some protected routes. There should be some way to do that. And I think it should start with some statement in the comprehensive plan uh, specifically states that to the best of the ability of the planners to protect some of these corridors. And then have that filtered down into LDRs. And it can be something simple. Uh, and I, I, and the two, the two ways that currently, without those statements being in the documents, are the Natural Resources Committee can review development projects, go out and get boots on the ground, see if there's anything worth protecting. And secondly, planning and zoning also performs the same function. But when both do that, you get more, more eyes on the ground. So what I propose is that some statement somewhere, uh, by the way, I'm remiss in having not read the full plan. I've only gotten through about twenty pages of it so far. Uh, but some, somewhere in there should be some statement of the effect that wildlife corridors, to allow that, that, that resource, that wildlife resource to continue using the city should, should be done. And then down to the LDRs, and that would give some formal backing to what the city, planning and zoning, and the Natural Resources Committee could be doing. That's basically all I have to say, except that I, it's really good to see that climate change is emphasized in this city plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Um, anyone else in the room? Um, I saw the yellow shirt first. And then I saw the person in the orange and blue, and then the person in the back. So one, two.
Oh, hi. My name's Steve Toronto, and I've been a Chamberlain neighborhood resident for the last twenty-eight years. I was just curious, before I start, can I see a show of hands of how many of you read all the um, emails and suggestions that were given and sent in from the listening sessions? That's great. Thank you. Uh, the reason I ask is because I was kind of disappointed that more of the suggestions weren't incorporated into the city plan. The, uh, you know, maybe it was because I think the directives for the city plan was to rewrite and, um, update and streamline the two thousand and sixteen comprehensive plan. And, you know, maybe it's because you're streamlining the two thousand and sixteen plan without any level of detail that these suggestions are getting left out. But I think it's a mistake. I think it's a flawed directive. I think I would like to see the city plan be just as strong as the last comprehensive plan. And to me, it's weaker. I, I think, um, yeah, should be just as strong so it's clear that South Burlington's vision, what South Burlington's vision is, is. If the, um, if other city policy documents mention, uh, you know, details of this vision, that's great, because I heard someone say that it's, it's covered in other documents. But there's no reason why it can't be covered in this document and other documents to make it really strong. Because one thing we learned, I learned from the rezoning task force, you know, meetings that I went to was it's really important to have a strong comprehensive plan to fight back, you know, request and, and fight back things that are contrary to the vision of, of Chamberlain Neighborhood or South Burlington. Excuse me. Um, well, and that kind of leads me to the fact that there was a lot of people suggesting that there was like five paragraphs from the Airport Rezoning Task Force final report that that, you know, there's tons of people sending suggestions that those should be incorporated into the city plan, and they still haven't been incorporated. And I don't quite understand why. I mean, that's really, I, I heard one explanation was that the Airport Rezoning Task Force report only represented vision for those 11 acres. And I think that's totally false. It was very clear that that report represented a vision for all, I think it's 44 acres, but all of the noise land, not just the 11 acres. And that was clear for anyone who went to all the meetings and, and the writing in the report. So it's, it's what, what I see here in the city plan is kind of contrary to the desire of the citizens, you know, and you're supposed to be representing us, so. So that was my main point, is I think that's really important that those five, and I'm sure you all know them, you saw enough of those emails, the five, you know, I think on page three, there's two sentences, and on page four of the report, there is like three paragraphs. And I really strongly would like to see those put into the city plan. Also, I sent a few other suggestions and never heard any response. I'll bring them up tonight, and maybe you guys can respond to them later. On page 24 of the latest draft, second paragraph in the Burlington International Airport section, there's a sentence that says, "This should include utilizing airport-owned land around Airport Parkway for projects that benefit both the airport and the community, support for airport-related businesses around airport property, and improve transportation to the airport that avoids impacts on neighborhoods." To me, that seems to encourage the airport to request for more zoning changes. That's exactly contrary to what the Airport Rezoning Task Force's vision was, Chamberlain Neighborhood's vision was, as reported in the task force final report. Maybe you could change that sentence. My suggestion would be, so it reads like this. "This should include utilizing airport-owned land around the airport for projects that benefit the airport and the community, support airport-related businesses around the airport property, where current zoning allows an improved transportation to the airport and avoids impacts on neighborhood and environment," added environment in there. But I think it's important to mention where the current zoning allows, because it was very clear that the Chamberlain Neighborhood wants to keep all noise land, all noise land zone residential, any type of residential, but residential. I heard somebody at one of the past meetings mention they wanted to leave the option open for maybe mixed use. That seems like it's going backwards as far as leaving, leaving the most housing available in the future. Seems like mixed use is something you use, I'm not a planner, but from what I understand, mixed use, I thought is something you use when something's zoned commercial, and you want to put more housing in there, and you try to get mixed use in there, so you put housing in there. But changing some, all the noise land that's zoned, you know, I know you weren't saying this, but someone had this in their head that maybe they want to leave the option for mixed use, and changing that residential to mixed use is unnecessary. There's plenty of commercial businesses within walking distance of, of that, of noise land. So there's no need, I mean, the only thing I can possibly think of would be a reason to do that would be to appease developers. And we're supposed to be appeasing residents, not developers, so. So I really, I would like to see that sentence changed to, you know, add the words where current zoning allows. On page 30, the second paragraph, it says, "Emissions generated by Leahy International Airport from Burlington International Airport are being considered and addressed by the City of Burlington and Airport Administration." That's just plain not true. What would be true is if you put in emissions for ground transportation, not aircraft, generated by Leahy International Airport, are being addressed by City of Burlington. But correct me if I'm wrong, but the last time I looked at the Burlington's Climate Action Plan, they did not include emissions from military aircraft takeoff or landing, taxiing emissions, or commercial aircraft. So, you know, that, that sentence is incorrect, and it's ravine washing, really, to say that. On page 43, there's a section about noise pollution. It says, "Noise pollution, light pollution affects human quality of life in the natural world. As the city's land use patterns evolve, noise pollution may also migrate and are worthy of examination." That's all it says about noise pollution. I don't understand how, how you can live in South Burlington and have a section about planning noise pollution and not mention the F-35 and the noise generated by the airport. You know, it's, it just boggles my mind. On page 50, the last paragraph, a couple places in, in the plan, but this, on page 50 is, I think, the first time. It mentions the sound mitigation program. And that, you know, communicating with the airport's important, it gives all accolades for their sound mitigation program, which I think, really, we shouldn't be giving them that many accolades for that program. It's way behind schedule. It's, it's just a bone they threw to us. But I think if you're gonna have to mention the sound mitigation program, you should be fair and mention that the city still acknowledges that there's a huge sound problem there. You know, like Mr. Longo said at the last landscaping meeting, he has no solution for out, for mitigating sound outdoors. I reminded him that there is one solution, getting rid of the F-35. Page 50, last paragraph, yeah. Yeah. So I'm pretty sure I went back, kept going back, because the pages kept changing as the thing got revised, but I'm pretty sure that's where it is. But if, I think anywhere in there, if you're gonna mention the sound, this great sound mitigation installation program, you should also mention how many people are still affected by all the noise pollution generated, and that the city, you know, maybe should be doing something about that, or, you know, plan to do something about that. But I don't think it's fair just to mention the sound mitigation program without mentioning the ongoing onslaught of noise. On page 88, Action 146, it says, "Create transitions from the Burlington International Airport in areas identified for redevelopment that serve or buffer nearby neighborhoods. Establish a community vision for the future of this area." First of all, that's really vague. Secondly, we've already established a community vision for this area. That was done in the Airport Rezoning Task Force report. So I don't know why, I think this should just be delayed, deleted. And especially if you add those five sections from the report, like so many people requested, you wouldn't need that sentence. It's vague, and it's contrary to what the vision of the neighborhood is, to keep everything zoned R4, or anything residential. Yeah, I don't know what transitions you're talking about. Anyhow, also, let's see here. Also on page 88, Action 148, engage in a holistic, community-driven planning process for the land in South Burlington owned by the City of Burlington as part of or related to the proximity of Leahy Burlington International Airport, with particular focus on the lands of Buddy and the Chamberlain Neighborhood. That should also be deleted, because if you add in, we've already done that holistic, community-driven planning process. That was the Airport Rezoning Task Force, the whole community that was open to all of South Burlington residents. So, you know, and the planning was already done, so I, it's, it's disappointing to see that in there, instead of just incorporating the language from the Airport Rezoning Task Force into this plan. So I'd like to see that disappear. And lastly, someone earlier mentioned the maps. The maps are really hard to understand and read. I know we're probably trying to save money by using the same maps again, but let's do a good job on this. Especially map three, landscape level conservation areas. You've got all these different shades of green, and I'm got pretty good eyesight, and I'm not colorblind, and it's really hard to figure out where everything is with all those different shades of green. That should be made more distinguishable, maybe, you know, somehow, different colors or little lines or dots through the different shades of green. But we don't have to use six different shades of green, just gets very confusing. That's all I got. I, I, I hope, I appreciate everyone's hard work on this, and it's, it's overall, it's a really good plan, but I just wish there was some more, that more of the suggestions that people made were incorporated, as I laid out. And a lot of these meetings, I, I come up here, we say something, you know, people say something, we never hear back from you guys, the reasoning for not incorporating those suggestions. So I hope maybe later, sometime in this meeting, you'll address these and explain why you're not incorporating these into the plan. So there's a little two-way, instead of just talking past each other all the time. So thank you very much.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for the lovely evening. I won't take up too much of your time. I was here, I think, a few months ago.
If you could state your name and spell your last. Thank you.
Sorry. My name's Janice Gallant, G-A-L-L-A-N-T. Anything else? No? Okay, okay. So, and during the time that, that was the first meeting that I had gone to, and I had spoken at that time about the concern about products such as TruGreens and pesticides being used really willy-nilly throughout the United States and beyond that. And I think there was a general concern about it. And I was happy to see, when I looked at what you've written, that on page 36, Action 52, you said it was, it's written to educate the community about the impacts of the use of pesticides and herbicides. And then going further into it, under the Ecological Resources section, page 40, I read that calling for a reduction in pesticide and herbicide use, and talked about some other ways of, of solving the problem. And I have to say honestly, and I'm so thrilled that it's in the report, that that, that it is there because it needs to be there, and probably needed to be in every report in every city in the United States for a long time. And so I'm left with wondering, what's, what's the plan? Now that we've, we understand that we need to educate people. For me, it has to do with health and safety. And as I was going through your report, for me, it was like, how are we serving the health and safety of, of South Burlington? The fact that people don't know, and I'll be telling you a few other things, doesn't, doesn't save them from possibly being affected in an adverse way by procedures such as how they're, how they're taking care of their lawn. Because the truth about the biggest, I think, provider here is TruGreens, is that 53% of their ingredients, what you call possible carcinogens, they cause cancer. 41% are banned or restricted in many other countries throughout the world. 34% of the products cause problems with endocrine, the endocrine system in our bodies, so that the endocrine system doesn't work well. Think about diabetes or some, some disease like that. And 100%, 100% of TruGreens products actually threaten our environment. So that when, what I, so that when I read about educate the community, and then on page 40, reduce pesticide use, that seems to me to be the kind of language we would use if we, you know, we need to do something. But what, when I read the literature, and I see and hear what's happening with the use of these chemicals, for me, it's like red zone. You know, this is an emergency, because we're so wonderful about what we're doing in South Burlington, but we're talking about now the safe, safety and health of really every person. Because it doesn't matter if I don't use this, if my neighbor does on the right and on the left and in back of me, and it's in the ear, and it rains, and these chemicals go into the water, they come into our retention ponds, and then they go into our beautiful lake. So it doesn't matter really that, you know, you or I say, I would never do that. You know, I'm gonna go with organic, which is what I go with. But it doesn't matter that I do organic, because we all have to accept the fact that we can no longer, we can no longer function allowing these chemicals into our environment. If we had more time, I would talk with you about the biggest problem with children, how these kinds of chemicals affect children predominantly in a strong way, because they're growing and developing, and can, and can behavioral changes can be seen. The Bayer Company, I think, recently settled for a gazillion billion dollars because it was proven that there were innumerable cases of Hodgkin's lymphoma, which they felt was due to their exposure to these chemicals. And we, I know, I'm sorry, I think I'm taking up too much of your time. But so what I want to see, I love that you say educate the community, and I love that you say reduce pesticide and herbicide use. But how can we make it urgent? I know that, I, I don't believe that you use them yourself around your own property, right? South Burlington property does not use pesticides and herbicides, I believe. But the rest of South Burlington does, you know? And how can we get the message out? What do we need to do? I almost feel, you probably can tell from the tone of my voice, that this is urgent. And is there, is, is there a way we could perhaps put together a panel, get some experts? I'm not an expert. I happen to be a medical doctor, and I've been a pediatric radiologist for about 15 years, and then I was associate dean of admissions. So, you know, I sort of, I've seen, seen a lot, but this is not my specialty. But, but talking about and making sure that we as people on this earth, everyone can be as healthy as you can be by what you eat, by, you know, what we do with our, our waterways, our highways, all the wonderful things we talk about. But not talking about this, we miss, I think we're gonna miss the boat, and there'll be unnecessary illnesses and deaths as a result, not just South Burlington, you understand, anywhere. So I'd like to code it red, red plus this. And I don't, and I'm open to any of the next steps that would need to be taken here. Probably, I think rightly, as you said, educating the community and educating ourselves, right? And, and making that happen, and then reducing pesticides. But the few of us who are in the room have tried to make that happen, even with our own, own community, small communities, and, and of lovely people, wonderful people, smart people who would never hurt anything. And, and yet, when it comes to green lawns, it's very hard to make changes. And I have come to understand that, you know, and not, not totally get, you know, I've been out of shape, because we haven't told people. They don't know. I'm only telling you like just the top of what I know. But there's more to it, and I can't believe that certainly the board here, or our wonderful South Burlington residents, if they knew, change would be possible. And if we could change South Burlington, you know, then, you know, we could change the world. Because I, I really do think so. And I, for one, would be, do anything that the board would, would think, would think would be helpful. And I, I'm, I'm guessing that anyone who came out tonight for different reasons would also be available. So I think I was gonna read you a list. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna end with a list. 50% of TruGreens have ingredients that are possible carcinogens, cancer. 41% of the ingredients are banned, restricted in other countries. Forty-one percent of the ingredients are banned, restricted in other countries. Thirty-four percent endocrine disruptors. These particularly in children will have problems going through puberty and various things like that. Ingredients are known or suspected, so a hundred percent include ingredients that threaten our environment, water supplies, and are traceable seven days, several days later when they run off into our water and into our air. There's more, but I think probably I should end there. Are there any questions? Do I take questions? You take questions.
No questions. We're listening for it right now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
You're in the back?
Do I have to press this? Hello, my name is Marjorie Lipson, L I P S O N. And I, I actually have a question and perhaps a suggestion. I live in the southwest quadrant as well, and I'm entirely in favor of supporting the ideas that my neighbors have offered. But one of the things that I think is problematic is, and it happened here tonight, is the wishing away a potential problem by saying, well, it's just a vision. So as I read this document, entirety of it, one of the things that impressed me was that it appeared to be focused on helping the city have a framework for decision-making. It would, you know, if I have a decision to make, it's, you know, you got a line here. Yes, no, and it's gonna help you make those decisions. So you shouldn't trivialize the decisions that it looks like you're going to make in this document. I'd ask you to be exceedingly clear, in fact, about what decisions you're going to be making so that the people who live in the city of South Burlington and have for decades aren't surprised, taken aback, horrified even by some of the things that happen down the road, even if it's some distance in the future. You should be very, very transparent about what this document is designed to do. If it really is your decision-making rubric, then say that. And then we'll all know what kinds of decisions are coming down the road. And, and the, the difficulty with this is exacerbated by, I, I think what may be, but perhaps is not, labeling. So on map one, we have the proposed city park area. So it's proposed. It's apparently been proposed as something we will do, and we'll make decisions related to that. On map four, on the other hand, we have planned trails, walks, and multi-use things. So what's the difference between proposed and planned, and is the plan more real? Not more real? You know, did somebody, are there plans in the work to do that? Because these two maps actually talk to each other. When you look at these two maps, there's conversation going on about what's going to happen in the future. And so it'd be very, very helpful to know what the language actually means that you're using. So if it's visionary, why not say visionary sidewalk? Out there, in some perfect world, we might get that. But if you actually have a plan, if it's in a document that's planned, then I'd like you to say that. And my feeling about this grew as I listened tonight because I think the other lost opportunity here is one that's already been addressed, which is if there actually are existing documents, plans, earlier iterations of goals and actions, then why not just reference them? You know, you can always say, see, document blah, 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 and I assume they're on our website, and we can go find them. And that's gonna take a little bit of work to go through, but the way you've organized the document is, is, as a general proposition, is very helpful. So you'll know where there's pre-existing work. And if it's at odds with that pre-existing work, or if it's at odds with other committees doing this, then I think that needs to be made clear also, because these are parts, decisions can't be made if there are things that need to be reconciled. So why not, you know, and you have a challenges section for each of these segments and your goals and actions. You have an analysis and challenges, but you haven't taken the opportunity to really tell what some of those challenges will be. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, anyone online? Wanna give some comments? You could unmute if, and... Okay, anyone else in the room? Um, so it seems like we may be nearing the end of comments. Any last?
Yeah.
Comments before we?
I, I have a question.
Sure, go ahead, Ray.
Oh, let me put my camera up, okay. This is a hearing, and I think once it's over, it's done with. Is that correct? Or can we continue to send comments? I asked the question because my verbal comments tonight, I just wanted maybe put them in writing and send them on.
You know, it's a good question. I don't know how the rest of the media, I mean, the hearing will be over when we close the hearing, which seems like it would happen tonight. I don't know, is there an official?
It's not that critical. I'm on the record, but...
It's, it's, it's up to you. I mean, the purpose of the public hearing is to be, when the comments are received, there's no legal restriction from you reading if you decide not to vote tonight, and you vote in two weeks and somebody provides something, that's up to you as to what to do with it. Once the commission votes on it, any comments that we get at that point, we'll share with city council because we'll assume that the, the members of the public want it to get to the public body whose hands it's in. So if, let's say, the commission were to vote tonight, or Mr. Gonda provides comment, whenever after you have provided your major vote, we'll make sure that it gets to council so council can see it.
So it sounds like it's okay, and if we don't vote tonight, we'll see it before our next meeting, or it'll get passed on to council.
Thank you.
We had Penny Tompkins wanting to make a comment online.
Hey, Sarah, did you wanna say something first about the?
Just a quick question about what you're talking about. Talking about, you know, the procedure of taking public comments and weaving them into the document or deciding not to. Is it possible that the people that spoke about the airport comments, the Chamberlain neighborhood members who've written in, is it the case that you have received all of those, but you're not deliberating on any of the comments, whether it's those or the ones from tonight or whatever, until some future moment when, when that's on the agenda for your work? Is that right? So in other words, the, the written comments that have been sent in by the Chamberlain folks, have, have they been considered and rejected, or they're just in the pile being collected?
Um, so we did have, so we had gotten a lot of comments from a lot of people, including those during our kind of informal public comments section before this formal. And we, we did discuss all of them, and we had a discussion about, I think we're gonna touch on it again tonight, just to be clear. But I mean, we did review all the comments. We did specifically talk about that.
And decided whether to utilize some of them or reject some of them. Okay, just wondered about that point.
Yeah. Penny, you wanna go ahead?
Sorry, I was doing the, doing the video stuff. Can you see me now?
Yes.
Okay, I can't see myself, so. This is just a general comment, so I do serve on the Public Art Committee, but this is just a general comment for me about the city plan overall. I think it's a great thing that the plan has put the need to address climate change and climate resilience as our lens through which we look at other things coming towards the city in the next eight years, which I know is the length of the life of the plan. And that's basically it, because I think everything is affected by that. And a, there's no, there's no way around that fact, and I think it's better if we are looking at it upfront and recognizing it for the importance it has to all of us and to our community. That's really it. It was just a general comment. Thank you for all the hard work on the city plan, though. I had my little piece of it in, in, in my volunteer role, and that was hard enough. So you guys have a big, big job there. So thank you.
Thanks. Um, Nora, and I can't see your last name. You're cynical. Okay, go ahead.
And I'm sorry, I can't, for some reason, my, I can't get my camera working tonight. I'm not sure why it's deciding not to work. So just, I wanted to just follow up on the comment. Not Penny's last comment, but the, the, the resident in the audience who had the question about proposed versus, you know, whether something was a vision or whether something was already planned. And, and I had one just question about, like specifically around, in the recre, in the one map around recreation, um, space and recreation uses. There was a couple of proposed, um, parks or, or parks. And, and I was just wondering whether or not, as proposed, was there a plan that was already written and potentially going to be adopted at some point? Like, for example, there was some land on, um, down by the lake. There was some off of Spears Street, and there's street, and then there was some off of another proposed park off of Heinzburg Road. So are those specific, respect specific plans, or have they already been executed or what?
Um, I think the idea with this map is that they're generally desirable, but, you know, there hasn't been like a layout of exactly where they'd be. It's kind of like a little bit of a blob on the map. But, you know, the general area has been identified as an area where there isn't currently a park, and it could be desirable to have one. So I think that, you know, there's many different ways something like that could or could not happen in the future. You know, maybe in the case where the land came up for sale, the city council would have this extra guidance to try to maybe buy it for the city for the use of a park, would be an example.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just noticed that along the areas where there's more potential development, those little red dots don't exist. So I guess from an equity standpoint, you know, hoping that there would be some thought given to places where parks or city land could exist in the more developed, in the areas where there's, there's more potential development being proposed.
So Nora, another planning process that's upcoming in the next few years would be starting in the next year or so, would be a Parks Master Plan. And that is a specific process related to park locations, where we have parks, where we need parks, making sure we have green space near development. All of that sort of stuff is in, and all the details, all the specific details. There's another process upcoming in the next little while that would be addressing that, that level of detail. This, the city plan level is addressing that we need additional park space, and here are some areas where it may be smart to, to look at having additional park space, but there's a lot more detail in, in the upcoming planning process.
Okay, I just wondered, was just wanted to know how firm those red dots were, if those were very far down the planning process or very early into the planning process.
I would say on that spectrum, very early.
Okay. And then the other question I had was around both transportation and, I, you know, I do understand that, you know, there's a desire not to make, you know, the northwest corridors, like Spears Street Street and Dorset Street larger, but given kind of the climate impact of having, you know, so many single-family homes in that areas and, and cars is very car-dependent, if we would not also consider those north-south areas, you know, you know, transit lines as for potential transportation. Yes, it's less densely populated, but, um, I think having to go, you know, I just think it would be worthwhile to consider that and, and as something that would also include considering us having our own transit system. And then the, I guess the other question would be just in terms of, it seems that some areas of the city, we very specifically in the plans, talk about infill, and we don't talk about infill as, as something that's a potential in the entire city, where it could be creatively put, and, and that was something that, that, you know, it's, for example, the paragraph around, when it's talking specifically about infill, really sort of implies that it's just gonna happen in those older neighborhoods, where infill could actually happen in any neighborhood in our city, you know, given, you know, what, you know, as long as it fits in with, with, with the character of that neighborhood. So it, it just makes it sound as if the older neighborhoods, the way that's, that sentence and paragraph is written is that, oh, the infill's gonna happen here, where it could actually happen in all kinds of locations. If I'm, if, you know, if I'm correct in that. And then the other idea around, go ahead.
You think he's going?
Okay, and then the last thing, question, comment I had was, you know, again, being, is, just thinking about, you know, that, that cider mill area is so, you know, the cider mill area, could there be a potential of something small like that popping up in another part of the city? Or just even some smaller commercial area so that people aren't having, always having to get in their car and go to a certain section of the city to get their needs met? You know, in terms of, would it make sense to have smaller, some smaller commercial areas spread out? I'm not talking about large, I'm just saying like, you know, you know, small, 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 just so that everybody isn't always getting in their car to get to the next thing that they might need here or there, that, that might be helpful for those communities.
So Nora, I just wanted to point out, if you read the descriptions of the different land use types, no land use type says that it would be residential only. So like the, even the yellow, that's considered our lowest scale residential, primarily residential uses, areas has language in it about, you know, a corner store, a local hair salon, or a, you know, arts, community art center, or whatever it might be, that's a, a scale and of a utility for the neighborhood. So that was, is something, while not specifically called out in, in places on the map, like they're not dots everywhere that show where those should be, that's intentionally done to allow flexibility in any area where those may naturally occur. They would be allowed to do so in the way that these land use types are written.
Great, thank you. I'm sorry if I missed that. Thank you.
No, no problem.
Any other additional public comment?
No, thank you very much. And thank you, you know, I, I can see how the plans really evolved in sort of how, it's definitely easier to read. I like the way the bullets are set out and the intentions and goals. And so it's just, thank you. Thank you for all the work.
Thank you, Nora. Hey, anyone else? Okay, so... Let's go back to my agenda. Um, so I guess we're still on the same agenda item. We can, we, should we close the public hearing? I think we need a motion. Somebody?
I'll move to close the public hearing. Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, okay. So, public hearing's closed. Tommy?
As, as we were listening to public comments, it's just my...
Yeah. As we were listening to public comments, it occurred to me that it would be very helpful if Paul would kind of state what he stated to us many times when we wanted to put more detail and much more specific language into the plan, and, you know, to help the public understand more. And, you know, to help the public understand more about why it, it is kind of a plan that well, you can, I think you understand what I'm saying, just under, why, why it's written the way it's written, because we, we wanted to put a lot more detail into it, but it always got whittled down to something that sort of covered it broadly.
Well, I, I, thanks for opening that up, Donna. I think two things. One, you know, I think that the commission had heard over the last few years that having a plan that is succinct and clear and to the point and sets a vision is an important component of it. And so one of the objectives was to have something that was shorter and to the point and really hits what the city's vision in is, I think. So that's part one. And then part two is, over the last few years, as the city has grown, we've reached a point where, as many people have highlighted this evening, the need for a more in-depth analysis of a specific topic area, whether it's the Climate Action Plan that was done last year, that is a tremendous piece of work from a, a, a whole group of folks in the community and in and of itself carries a hundred actions to work on. Or it's the BikePad Master Plan that we're about to start this year, or as Kelsey made note of, that it is in the council's work plan to get the funding in place so that a year from now, we're starting a Parks Master Plan that will have much greater, not just detail, but also thorough analysis of a subject that is really important in our community. And then we can say the same thing about a housing needs assessment and a cultural master plan, which is something that has been discussed a lot by the city council and, and other pieces and, and all of them fit under the umbrella of the comprehensive plan, so that one document that is updated every eight years doesn't have to be carrying the weight of every detailed, every thorough analysis. Is that the statement that you wanted me to repeat, more or less?
Well, understand how, how the editing happened. Maybe a little bit more about how the editing happened because of, oh, I mean, we were, that's mainly what we've been doing for the last few months. We've been editing. And, you know, every time we'd say something, you know, we'd, we'd kind of end up with two paragraphs became one sentence. And a lot of people's, you know, comments and concerns, as I heard tonight, are fairly detailed and, you know, can they fairly say that our, you know, their, their statements are represented by a sentence or two in the current comprehensive plan, because what I heard is that people felt like they weren't heard. And, you know, I was here, so the things that I've said, I may not be happy with a couple of words that got in there, but at least I felt like we, you know, did due diligence. So, you know, I had the the advantage of being here, other people haven't. So that kind of statement, it's like, we've heard, we've heard all the comments. Why didn't we incorporate, you know, five pages of comments? This is why, you know, we were trying to break it down into a component that we could generalize into a plan, right? And I, I often say, this is, this is planning, this is an architecture, this is planning. It's kind of broad.
That's a great point, Donna. Thanks for sharing that. And also I'll, I'll add to it that, you know, the commission has been collecting really valuable feedback the last couple of months and also held eleven community sessions last winter and collected a lot of feedback at that time from some of the same folks and many, many others and did a community survey before that, but heard from many people. And so as you wrestle with, how do you want to adjust language, plus all of your committees? It's making sure that you're being true to what you're hearing recently, what you heard four months ago, what you heard eight months ago, and, and melding that into what sounds like a, a good, fair policy that reflects the needs of the city long, uh, overall.
And I just, I would just like to point out that it's, this plan is not an edited version of the 2016 plan. This plan is built on the backbone of the 2016 plan, but when the first drafts of each individual section were written, it was directly reflecting the public comment that we heard through those eleven community conversation sessions over the winter and the, the written survey, the written poll that was, that was posted and the open comment web form and all of that is what, what the plan is really built on. It's the topic areas and a lot of the current city policy comes from the 2016 plan, but the way that the plan is moving forward was built from that public feedback that we got in sort of February, March and April. Yeah, and, and the feedback from the committees that began in December, and we've asked for feedback from the committees three or four times at this point, plus review of all of the sections at least twice, if not three or four times by the commission. So iteratively over time, it is not, and the, the end result is not an edited version of the 2016 plan. It is a new document that is building on the old and providing direction for the future.
Just professionally edited too.
Based on what we heard this evening, I, I think there's something missing in the introduction, and that is a very clear statement of what a municipal plan is and what it is not. I think if that was clearly stated in the introduction, some of the questions that were posed this evening might have been answered. And I think we need to add that. Or if we have anything about it, it's not clear enough what the plan is and what it isn't, because I think in and in, in past years before I got on the commission, I also sometimes mixed up the comprehensive plan with the LDRs and, you know, what each one means. So it would be good to have a very clear statement of what the plan is and what it is not.
Was that something we should address first? I mean, it, it would be nice to move towards a a voteable document. So, you know, if we feel like we need to add something, let's add it, or if we feel like we can't do it tonight, then we should give direction to staff and that would mean that we would have an additional meeting to review the changes. So Laurie, did you want to follow up on that?
I was gonna add something else, so.
Okay, go ahead. About this introduction idea? Go ahead.
I was gonna do something different, so I didn't know if I want to finish.
Oh, then we should finish that thought then.
I, I, I think, and this may speak to what Donna was talking about. I, I, I think some of the kind of confusion is the right word, but it's, I mean, this, the difference between the comprehensive plan and the LDRs. You know, and a lot of times in this whole process, we got bogged down and stuff that, I think, Kelsey, you had a great term. It was, it fell below the level of the plan. And that doesn't mean it's insignificant, but what that means is that the comprehensive plan is sort of the guiding principles in this, and, and the, the things that direct the LDRs, but it doesn't have the level of detail that some of the stuff that we were given as feedback had. And I think there, there definitely is some confusion about, you know, the difference between the two, and I, I don't know how we would flesh that out. I, I don't know, does, does, does the state have anything in their statutes that, that say something like that?
I mean, the, the state statutes direct the, the municipalities about what they need to include in. Well, it's what they need to include in a municipal plan and what they're allowed to include in an LDR or whatever they name your regulations. So it's not exactly that comparison written in state statute. I would also put the official map into that conversation as well. That's at the, the official map is the level of the LDRs, but it's kind of our map version of so, some things and the zoning map being related to the LDRs. There are a few sections in the beginning of the plan, how to use this plan and the authority and purpose sections. The authority and purpose sections is, is a short, a much shortened version of the state statute. Tell, that tells the city what they need to be doing. And then the how to use this plan kind of walks through the structure of this plan. That would be where I would if, if the commission wanted to add additional clarification about the interplay between these few documents, that's where I would insert it. That's on page five, bottom of page five.
I think it should be understood, there's no regulation in this plan. These are just goals or objectives and possible actions that might be taken to, to achieve them. Twenty-four VSA forty-three oh two, whatever it is, does spell out a lot of stuff, but I think that's too dense for.
I would agree, which is why it's summarized.
We, we might be able to draw from that and.
What I'm hearing is maybe a statement somewhere in there that says something along the lines of the what, what the commission knows, which is that a, a plan is a long-term vision for the city. It in and of itself is just, it is the starting point for how we put together budgets, for how we uh, develop future regulations and amend our existing regulations, for how we consider future detailed studies to be need, to be made, investments by the city, capital investments. It's sort of taking that statutory language and, and de-densifying it.
So the sentence that's already included says, all parts of this plan are used to guide city policy and decision-making, communicate the city's long-range vision to the public and neighboring, neighboring municipalities, support, grant and other funding applications, and to indicate the city's policy intentions in other regulatory processes.
I'm sorry, Kelsey, where, where was that?
Immediately above authority and purpose, that paragraph, that's sort of the little guy right up from the next header.
And then, you know, further down a few pages later, there's the whole big section on implementation, which really very specifically points out all the other ways of implementing like the LDRs and, and things, so.
So as a suggestion, maybe that paragraph that you just read off, Kelsey, could start with slightly different words to say the, the function of this plan is to guide. Which might be, you know, and, and it could be, you know, right at the beginning of authority and purpose, just to if that's helpful to commissioners to.
Is that, Michael, do you think that that addresses it and Donna, to kind of just?
I think we should look at a draft of some, something that we that we develop, but, you know, and as I said, maybe we can draw from the statute.
Yeah. Well, since, since it is a legal document,
shouldn't be.
It is there. I think the, the issue with the public is it's really hard to read all of it. And, you know, if, 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 if people had spent as much time as with it as we had, you know, you have a better idea of, of what's there and that we did spend time defining things, but it just doesn't always get read. And is that a problem? I don't know.
I would, I would just also jump in that this is the big municipal plan document. It is our intention that after this plan is adopted by city council, so we're talking kind of next winter-ish, that we would go back and do something similar to what has been done with LDR updates in the past, the big LDR updates that have sort of one sheet versions that, that pull out the guiding principles page and the future land use map page, sort of a, a shorter, you know, Cliff Notes version of the plan, that's more accessible to casual resident reading bedtime.
Quickly.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just made the comment because it seems that members of the public were concerned that this plan will regulate their land in some way, and that isn't the case. So we need to clarify that somehow.
It's time to be really careful where you, where you put the color. Where you color the map in, you're gonna be careful.
Okay, well, let's, I guess, continue. Okay, so there's our edit. So I think wherever possible, if we can put in actual language that Kelsey could type in, so there's the possibility we could vote on it. I think that's the most helpful way to move through. Laurie?
So based on what I heard tonight from the public, I feel like there are some areas that we need to discuss more on. I, I would love to vote, but I would like to revisit some of what Steve Trono was talking about, and I'd like to look at some of the map issues that were brought up to see what we need to clarify. I think the statement about where was it? A purpose or a plan as opposed to proposed? And.
Vision, vision as a, as.
Getting some clarification on some of the areas that were brought up that I feel like I would like to have a discussion, not only for us, but also for the public to be able to hear our deliberation. And I'm not sure that tonight I have much energy left, but and I don't really want to do another meeting, but I feel like it is, is due.
I think we need to.
That's fine.
Digest what we've heard tonight, we will need.
Are you suggesting ending now, thinking about what we heard? And just taking it up, starting at a new meeting? Is that what you're thinking? Because you want to think more before discussing?
I think that would be ideal. And if we do that, I want to be clear to the public that even with the comments we got in the past, we talked about them in public meeting. And if the comments that you've submitted are important and you want to hear what we say, we will be doing it in public. So but I, I think it would be good to, to review some of the, for me, to review what was said and really let it sink in and then think about how I would want to move forward with it, so that we could talk as a group.
Okay. Do others feel the same way about just kind of thinking about it, reviewing back these comments and previous ones and?
Take it. I think so.
Scheduling perspective, just for you to consider, you do have your next regular meeting on October tenth. You could have that discussion then, but that's also the last day that you can vote out the plan. So if you want to have some discussion. Tenth this year is the Tuesday. Um, so if you're wanting to have a dialogue and don't feel that you necessarily have the language on the spot or want staff to prepare something for you to think about, you may, as much as you've had a lot of meetings, you may want to have a special one in between then and now, uh, now and then, in order to not be in a position of you, you'll have to vote on the tenth.
Would that be on the second?
Um, I think, well, the Tuesday is.
That's a city council meeting. And some of us are also there.
Yeah. So I think, you know, in our packet, it had suggested October third or a regular October tenth. Paul Engels did speak in favor of doing that because he was disappointed he wouldn't be here this evening. So that was feedback he had given.
If we could have a meeting that was relatively short so that we could talk about these things, make decisions and know that we've got the language ready for the tenth. Tenth, right?
Yep.
So that we, I want to make sure that on the tenth, we're in a good, solid position to vote and say, yes, we're good to go. I'd rather get to the tenth and just have a vote and be done than
Okay.
Get to the tenth and not be able to get through it.
Well, we also could vote during a meeting where we deliberate if we can come to consensus. So, I mean, technically it could be tonight. We're not ready for that. It could be.
It could be.
Special meeting in between. It sounds like leaving it to the tenth is uncomfortable. Just knowing we've, all around uncomfortable, so.
So I, can I add something? I, I would ask that all of the commissioners who are not happy with what's in the plan or have some issues, could they send those to Kelsey so that then we all could see what they are, so we can all think about them?
Yeah, because I know my.
We know exactly, when we come here on the second, and whatever our meeting is, we're all on the same page about what we're talking about.
And if that's the, what the commission wants to do, I would actually have you pinpoint exactly where you want language to be changed. It's about changing things about this topic, like.
Specific about what we're looking to do, because we have to move this to the city council.
Yep. And just from a, a staffing perspective, when we. Yep, and just from a a staffing perspective, when we have to turn around packets and things, it can't be kind of the last minute that we're getting. Um, so if you are intending to, if you intend to have a special meeting on the third. Um, I would need to get those comments by this Thursday. To have a chance of compiling them into it. My my intention would be to compile the comments into a single document for review by commissioners. And put it in the packet for the special meeting. Um, to do that, it would need to be in my email two days from now.
Be the day after tomorrow.
Yes.
In response to that, I can say I totally agree with you, Dennis, but some of the things for me are not necessarily something I clear that I want to add. But some of the points that were brought up, I feel like it would be good to have some discussion about. What we have included or hadn't and why.
I I don't think that that's what Duncan's talking about. I think Duncan's talking about like if, like, Michael actually did provide a few. Um, language changes that he specifically wants that aren't just a discussion about. It was, it's kind of a separate thing, so.
Yes.
Is that kind of what you were thinking? Leave open for discussion, you know?
Discussion, but if if there's things you'd like to talk about, I'd like them to be on the list. So we can all think about them and go, okay, yes, that's important, or I think we can move through that.
Absolutely.
Uh, I mean, ideally, I I know Kelsey would love it. We'd love to vote on this on our next meeting, not the tenth.
Yes, and I would be open to that, definitely.
Okay.
But again, I I think.
I just want to, I just want to make sure that tenth, we don't overload the tenth, that's my concern.
Okay, so um is there consensus on um adding a special meeting on October third?
What's that? What is?
It's a Tuesday, it's next Tuesday.
That works for you, Paul. The third.
Or someone will be there.
Sarah, remember, one, one of the two of you, hopefully.
It will probably be me.
Who, Tuesday the third?
Tuesday the third, um, also, that is a, I believe it's a DRB meeting night, so we would not have this room. We would be upstairs in three oh one, um, making sure, I'll have to make sure that I can book three oh one, but that's where I would plan to be.
Okay, well, if not, maybe one of those nice library rooms, they're nice too, but.
So we are meeting the third and the tenth.
Yes, the tenth is your regular meeting, and you have a public hearing scheduled for that date on the LDR amendment that you did last meeting, so. That one is.
And in fact, I I'd actually prefer to not be in this room. This is hard for discussion. I think, I think having one of the rooms where we can like see each other a little better, like the three oh one or the library room. Where we're a little more on a you or.
The question about the tenth, if we're efficient next Tuesday and we get all our language done. And we vote on it. Do we need to meet on the tenth?
Yeah, because you guys wanted a hearing for the tenth.
On a separate topic, but you could um politely ask that it be a light agenda other than that.
Okay.
Or or not politely, it's your.
It's your call.
That's a standing order.
Okay, so special meeting on the tenth, um, do, I guess, I guess, oh, yeah, yeah, third, um. One thing I think we could do right now for a few minutes before adjourning is um. If there's anything that we have questions for staff about or would like to see a special thing. Or we have like a specific question about maps, like, I think it might be helpful to like identify them now. In the case that it's something that we need help, like visualizing or looking up.
I have, I have one question, I, you know, something I've I've heard twice now, and I don't really know how to define it. Or even. I have no clue as to how this even fits in to planning, and that is this whole concept of carrying capacity. That that is very confusing to me, like, like you really have a choice. When people move to where you are, you can choose to not accept them, you bust them away like they kind of do. Down at the border, or how do you deal with that, you know? It's, I I I think that. I mean, a couple of people have brought it up, and I think we've been kind of avoiding it, but I'm like, I don't even really know what it means.
Um, I guess I would say, Donna, there could, different people could use the term in different ways. So in the, in the, in the sort of classic planning terminology, it would be. Uh, reviewing and aligning your infrastructure and your and your service needs. As your population adjusts, um, and so, you know, are we doing proper capital planning? Are we planning for the needs of the um open space or of uh um um sewer capacity? Things like, things like that, so that's.
That's the planning definition of it.
So that would be a planning definition.
Definition I was hearing.
And that, as I said, different people use it in different ways, so I'll speak to that's the planning perspective of it, but but others may be using the term differently.
Okay, any um, any other specific? Wes, Laurie, when you're talking about reviewing the maps, um, do you think um? Maybe having staff think a little bit about the use of the word proposed versus planned and how it's different on the different maps? Is that kind of something you want to talk about?
I think that would really be useful, and I think the point that was brought up about the uh proposed city park area. That is on this map where it is shown, where it's shown on private property that is already developed, I think that probably should be. Could be.
Remedy.
Uh, remedied so that it's not doing that.
Yeah.
Um, likewise, the question about the bike path, it would be going along the shore. I understand that it's just a a quote proposed bike path, but. If we're proposing it, we need to know that it's. Going somewhere that might actually work.
I think if it's planned, it's much more different than if it's proposed.
It says it's planned.
The thing about the the bike path and on on a map like this in a municipal plan, um, is that it is not intended to show any. Engineering or mapping of a specific route, um, with paths in particular. It is generally showing a connection from A to B. Um, it's not showing necessarily where something would. Would wind or where it would connect at either end, but but the general thought of. The city would like to keep open the opportunity to connect A to B along that corridor in some location.
So maybe there's a way to make it fuzzier or to have a def- uh, an explanation, a a key point, something in here that says that. Because I can understand if if I had a piece of property. And it showed that we want to have this road and it's going to go right through my house. I might be a little bit concerned, um, so how do we? Keep the aspiration, but do it in a way that doesn't um cause alarms or. Create something that might in the future be conceived as, oh, that's what we were really going to do, um.
I think that's where my idea of somehow in in fairly simple concise terms. Stating what the plan is and what it isn't. Because that fear of uh that was expressed by some of the respondents this evening. Uh, is, I understand it, but plan is not going to do. What's shown, it's just an idea.
So when it, when there's a dash line that says a planned shared use path. If there's just a s- a subline underneath it that says the location is not. The turn, this is, this is not a. It looks like that's where the path is going, so we need to just say something that. It is intended to go somewhere, somewhere in this area, it has not been designed or engineered, et cetera, so.
Okay, we'll we'll work on that, Laurie. I think that, you know, somebody mentioned um the official map as a, as a sort of a compliment. And in some ways, uh, that that's exactly, you know, as the future land use map that you've intentionally shown with a little bit of a blur to it. Is intended to show a broad vision that a zoning map shows a specific. Similarly, from a regulatory perspective, the lines showing a potential future. Um, recreation path, if the city is going to choose to take a regulatory approach to it. The actual, the the official map needs to be very clear as to which parcel it is on or not. The comprehensive plan is only intended to lay out a broad sort of connecting A to B kind of idea.
So I think just adding that line in there so people understand that would would help a lot.
So let, I think, um, so it sounds like maybe we'll have a continued discussion of that to make sure that's addressed. And then, Michael, you were saying you didn't like just those couple words, but you wanted a bigger paragraph in the introduction kind of describing that. Concept, um, is that something you're going to write or do you want staff to write?
I'm, I am happy to step in and and write that, just clarifying the role of the municipal plan versus LDRs versus official map versus zoning map. And just really, I can drop a paragraph in there, four or five sentences that that puts that clearly.
Four or five sentences, a couple of bullet points, just.
Yeah. Got it.
I I also think it would be, sorry, it it would be good, what Lori said, to put the disclaimer right on the map.
Yep.
Because we heard from four people about the map.
Agreed, and that's, and that's our, has been our understanding from the beginning, is that there are a lot of people who are not going to read a hundred and something pages. And understandably so, um, and so we want the map to be able to stand on its own. And to have the maps be able to stand with the introduction, um, and give a pretty good idea of what the future plan is. Um, and then, you know, if people, if those are only the things that people look at, then they're getting some some critical information that prevents uh misunderstanding.
Um, and then I guess if we um, if we make a change to a map at the meeting. How does that work for morning? Do you need to then? Like, could we, like?
If if you're clear as to what that is, and we can, you know, we can draw on the fly, it's just like adding text. If it's very clear as to what your intent is and we draw it there, we can have our mapping consultant do it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure pushing the map discussion to next time isn't going to mess things up, so.
No, I think that's okay.
The one other area that I would like to um. Have some discussion about and maybe some feedback from staff is relating to the uh, the Chamberlain section of the plan. And the airport property and the uh five points from the uh rezoning task force. And to just re-review what our thought process is around that and why not to. Add those to the plan to help uh. Support that neighborhood, and I just. Maybe it's old age or something, but I don't don't totally remember that conversation and would like to revisit it.
Would it be helpful? Um, I know that you've heard a lot of feedback on this, and some commissioners are newer than others. Would it be helpful to um reshare with you the full Chamberlain um committee report from last year so that you can see? All of the language.
Airport rezoning task. Because there's, there's a Chamberlain report from twenty sixteen, and then there's.
The Chamberlain Task Force, the full.
Airport rezoning task force.
This full task force report from last year might be helpful so that you see, you know, uh, to these five paragraphs. Is is this the piece to take out? Is it another? Is it a shorter? Is it longer?
That would be great. My only concern is I have to have a something into Kelsey by Thursday at noon and. I don't know how much, but I'll get rid by then.
Well, I think, I think the point was, we wanted to kind of have a general, I I don't think you need to have your decisions in, but.
Yeah.
One thing I did note or remember about the Chamberlain, the proposed language was that it was very long. Uh, it was a couple of pages, and I think we might go back to the. The writer and ask. That it be shortened to, you know, three paragraphs.
I think that's the approach we've already taken.
Yeah.
But. But we can, that's what we did.
Who, who, uh, we've done that already?
Yeah, we did that already.
We tried to, well, needs to be done again.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, maybe at the mark, but.
Uh, so, is that going to be done by staff or does one of us have to volunteer?
Me.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I guess I would, I just want to, if I've got these couple of topics and some specific language that you'd like drafted, some things you'd like us to look into again. I just want to make sure there's nothing else that would be helpful to have something drafted from staff that may enable. The commission to look at language on next Tuesday and vote it out instead of having to sort of draft on the fly. Because I don't know about anyone else, but I'm I'm better at writing when I'm have a little more time than thirty seconds. So if there's any specific language anyone wants, even just something that you would like drafted for consideration by the, by the commission. It doesn't have to be the commission's position at this point, but anything that any individual commissioner would like to have drafted. Um, for for discussion, that would also be helpful. If anyone has anything they think of right now, or if you let me know as soon as possible. Um, that language would probably, request for language probably would be better tomorrow. Um, if not, if not at this meeting.
I guess one just follow-up from the maps, I think one thing that would be helpful when we're talking about those maps is in that area. Um, some of the comments we were hearing was that the line went through somebody's house or single-family yard or deck. Um, it might be helpful just to be able to like. See if that's the case, and so we could scoot the line over if it really is through like an individual's house. And we don't need to see it now, I'm just saying like that would be something that could be helpful per next time.
Um, I I know that you don't want to see it now, but I I just want to make a quick note to that, that um. Part of the reason that the maps look like this, um, that don't show homes on them. And that the lines, if you look, these green lines and these red lines are about twice as wide as the road layer. That makes them about a hundred and something feet wide. It's intentional that we don't show the homes on this. Because the more that you show the detail of a home, the more that you're implying that it is directly over the home. So it's, this is an attempt, but maybe not quite all the way there to show that it's fuzzy. Because as soon as we show, oh, we're skirting a home by a little bit, then that implies that, oh, we must have a very specific intention as to where it's supposed to be. We'll think about, is there a way to fuzzify it a little bit, but that's, that's what this is trying to be a little bit cartoony. Um, to not show the detail of an individual home or property line, because as soon as we get to that, then. We're telling a very precise story of your property, your line, so I I know you didn't want to get into it, but I just wanted to make that.
Okay, anything else you're requesting for next time? You can, like, like.
Um, can I make two very quick um suggestions based on feedback that was heard? Um, there was a reference, I believe Sarah Dop um noted that in terms of purposes that um city capital funds can be used for. To add the word conservation, that seems like a no-brainer or something we'd like to add. Um, she might have also been her who talked about um um small um. South Burlington centric, um, transportation. We do have uh an action that talks about. Um, routes and connections between the Shelburne Road corridor and the Wil- and the Wilston Road area. The Climate Action Plan uses the term microtransit as something to explore. We could easily add to one of those actions just a statement of explore microtransit because it is in the Climate Action Plan.
Yeah.
And that is exactly the kind of thing that um I think Sarah is talking about of. Um, how do we, how do we envision public transportation, not necessarily in high-density areas? So just two little things that I think can, um, and if we see any others that sort of fall in that category, are you comfortable with us bringing them to you next week?
Please.
Yes, please.
It was also uh Nora Senakal talked about the the North-South Dorset and Spear Street. Shuttle service or something to provide, it's the same micro.
Yep, yeah, so if we see things that um appear to be comments that you've. Um, that are intended to be captured, but maybe aren't fully captured, that we'll propose those to you.
Yes.
And feel free to reject them if you like.
The the question that arose about density and increasing density throughout the city, is that something that? I'm 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 thinking, because we've talked about it in terms of LDRs and in the. And the oh, the larger classifications of housing and. The the way the the fuzzy map looks at it, but that, that doesn't really describe density. But, uh, you know, I just wondered how.
Yeah, so.
We addressed that question?
So it intends, so the question as raised was about infill. And whether infill was the way there, some of the language about infill is written in the plan. It is about some of our older neighborhoods that are more centrally located, so the Orchards, Chamberlain, Mayfair Park, um. Country Club Estates, et cetera, in existing areas. Um, so whether or not you would consider additional infill character, consistent with the character of the neighborhood in other areas. Um, I don't think that necessarily relates directly to density, um, because these are your. Our land use types specifically are not intended to dictate a specific amount of density. Um, so I think there's, there is possibly some opportunity, if the commission wants to, to add. Further discussion of enabling small-scale infill, small-scale neighborhood scale infill in in all areas. further discussion of enabling small scale infill, small scale neighborhood scale infill in, in all areas of the city. Um, but we purposely don't talk about density specifically in the plan.
I think the, the one thing we did add specifically under housing though, was the ADUs would be allowed in any, in any uh, any of the zones.
So we, so I think um, maybe look at goal five. I think that maybe the way that's written, it makes it sound like it's only within existing neighborhoods. So if, if what Donna is saying is true, that we're not trying to only limit infill to existing neighborhoods, then. Maybe we need to reword that.
I think that would be great. I like that comment and.
Yep.
I think infill should be appropriate throughout. Yeah.
Okay, so.
Um, you also do have an action in the uh, low density, sorry, lower scale residential that talks about um, something to the effect of allowing foreign blending, small scale duplexes, multifamily into historically single family home neighborhoods, which doesn't specifically say the words infill or density, but it does speak to a um, greater mix of housing types that um, you know, meet a lot of different households needs.
Yeah.
I have a quick question regarding October the third meeting. Can you make public the input that you're going to be sending to Kelsey by the next couple of days? Like you do uh, the public input that was, you know, posted on the, on your website.
Right. So everything that we get by midday Thursday, we'll make sure is in the planning commission packet, which just like council packets and others, it is posted on our website. Um, that's the same place, same place that the commission accesses, it is same place for the public to get at it.
So that'd be under planning commission agenda?
Yep.
Of course, all the comments that commissioners send to Kelsey will be in there.
Provided we get them to her on time. It's because we have a deadline, state mandated deadline to have the plan approved by February of next year, has to go through all the hearings to get there.
And Mr. Trono, if um, for some reason you're having trouble getting at that, um, please feel free to contact me or Kelsey. I know that um, we've exchanged some emails, so you know how to reach us. We'll make sure you got it.
It's on the agenda.
Yep, but yeah.
Okay. Anything else before we head out? Okay, let's not do the rest of the agenda, but do we have to do that other business thing?
That would be great.
Okay, let's do the other business thing.
Yes.
Okay. So the, the other business thing is a letter of support stating that this, the south, this the South Burlington Planning Commission strongly supports South Burlington's discretionary grant application to fund the I eighty nine exit fourteen pedestrian, pedestrian bicycle bridge crossing, the east west alternative transportation crossing. Then it goes on, do you want me to read the whole thing?
Yep.
Um, I'll just read this first introductory paragraph. Our, our commission has endorsed this project numerous times, including um, in, in the, in the recommended official map, approving the purpose and need for the project and reiterating its importance in the twenty twenty four city plan under development now. Then it lists a lot of things about being committed to sustainable growth, walkable, bikeable downtown, key component of the transformation of the community, attractive alter, the project will be attractive alternative for walkers and bikers, comfortable for all of our members of our community, connect our neighborhoods, um, contribute to a positive identity for our community. Di, 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 I eighty nine is a, it severs our city in half. Um. Two, two, two. And then at the bottom, on behalf of this, of the planning commission, I appreciate your attention to the application. And it's addressed to the Honorable Pete Buttigieg, US Department of Transportation, signed by Jessica Leesos.
Oh, we need to vote on it though, right?
Yeah, because, because it's on behalf of the planning commission.
So this is asking for.
So this, this city is applying for additional grant funding and this is the planning commission saying we support the city applying for additional grant funding.
For the bike pad bridge of Thursday.
Yep. It's just another volunteer, the, a city volunteer committee, providing that the city staffers doing what you'd like.
I make a motion that we authorize this letter to be sent from the planning commission.
I second it.
Second.
Okay, on favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Yeah, I forgot the discussion, but okay, we are adjourned.
And thank you to the public for being here tonight.
Yes.
Before, oh. Are we going to deal with items six, seven and eight?
No, no.
On the tenth, oh.
Oh, uh, I don't know. We're going to have to figure that out because if we have more discussion on the comp plan, it might not fit again.
We could knock off a minutes if we want to right now.
You're already adjourned.
I adjourned.
Okay.